Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag as we open the meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business is announcements. I would like to remind you of the fact that since our last meeting on the 11th of September, Joe Roach's senior passed away at age 93, 25-year veteran of the Beach Commission, a veteran of the Marine Corps, and a solid citizen of the town. We remember him at this moment as we call this meeting to order. Are there any other announcements? Thank you. Approval of the minutes of September 7.
Motion to approve the September 2023 Town Council meeting unless anybody has any questions or comments.
Second.
Motion is made in second. It is their discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the department head reports first, that of the tax assessor.
Motion to approve the tax assessor report for July and August unless anybody has any comments or questions on that.
I'll second it as well.
Discussion on that. Assessor, any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And that of the fire department.
Same motion for the fire department for August.
Second. Motion is made in second. It is their further discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Old business. The first item and only item of old business is to receive the Rhode Island Ethics Commission advisory opinion that was rendered finding no conflict of interest for Anthony DeSisto to serve as the appointed town solicitor for the town of Little Compton while simultaneously serving as an independent contractor's legal counsel of the Rhode Island Coastal Resources Management Council. Solicitor.
Thank you. I appeared before the Ethics Commission on September 12th for this opinion. They found no conflict on it. You have their three-page opinion on the matter. I will say that if there is ever a direct conflict in the future, I will recuse not only from this council, if it's the CRMC, I recuse from them too, and any other conflict. But the correspondence you received was that it is an inherent conflict. It is not. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Just for the record, the Ethics Commission said, and as I read this, that they have no jurisdiction over the representation of coastal resources. That's why it's not a conflict because...
They have jurisdiction over me as Little Compton Town Solicitor.
But not as the...
That's correct.
Because you're a private...
That's correct, but that's not what the opinion is. The opinion is that there's no conflict between the two on it, notwithstanding the fact that they don't have jurisdiction.
Not a lawyer, but you read all that stuff and it's very confusing. It goes on and on and on.
To me, the result isn't confusing, there's no conflict.
It was a good read for you, wasn't it, Tony?
Oh, yes, it was.
Is there a motion to place this on file?
So moved.
Discussion on that. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Our first item of new business is two requests from the Little Compton Housing Trust regarding 164 John Dyer Road. I've been asked by the Chair of the Housing Trust for him to have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Patrick Bowen, and I'm the Chairman of the Little Compton Housing Trust. I appeared before you tonight, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. I would, however, request a change. So it was brought to my attention that there was some ambiguity regarding our agenda item for this matter in our September meeting. Due to that, I would respectfully request and withdraw the request for any votes this evening. I would, however, like to make myself available to inform the council about this particular The matter is with regard to a parcel of land that was recently acquired by the Ag Trust in conjunction with another individual. That individual is Dennis Talbot. It was brought to the attention of the Housing Trust shortly after the Ag Trust meeting of August 6, I believe it was. And Mr. Talbot approached myself and another member of the Housing Trust with a proposal that he had acquired, was intending to acquire a portion of this land for the purposes of affordable housing. That being approximately a five-acre parcel whose address was known as 164 John Dyer Road, the access to which is through Old Harbor Road in Westport. The proposal that was brought before me was that Dennis Talbot was intending to take this piece of property and effectively sell it for the price that he was paying for it to the Little Compton Housing Trust, effectively the town of Little Compton, for the purposes of affordable housing. Once the Housing Trust became aware of this opportunity, a member of the Housing Trust applied for a grant from Rhode Island Housing and has, in fact, received $200,000, the price paid by Mr. Talbot for said parcel. So it was my intention to come before this council this evening and request, as has been done in the past, the approval of this council for that purchase. But again, respectfully, I will withdraw any request to vote here tonight and instead just provide you with information about this particular parcel. And in point of fact, I don't have a great deal of information on it yet. It has not as yet been subdivided by the planning board. It is my understanding that it is on the agenda for the planning board's next meeting. I believe that would be next week. The two agenda items, the second one was a request to vote to allow the Housing Trust to apply for low or no-interest loans. And since this request was made, I've been informed also by a member of the Housing Trust that we are in line to receive grants for pre-development funding for the same parcel. So at this point in time, I would open up any questions that I may be able to answer from this council regarding this particular proposal. And again, I don't have every answer, but I'm willing to entertain any questions that there might be.
Patrick, when I first saw this, this is all news to me. I knew the Ag Trust bought the property. I wasn't aware that Dennis had bought a portion of it. And from what you're saying, I agree. This has got to go to the planning board for subdivision. I mean, we just can't say, okay, we're going to give you money. We don't know what we're giving you money for. We're working with the town's money here, the approval from the town. So we're going to need quite a bit more information before this council can approve something like that. And I'm sure Larry's going to have something to say about how, you know, because he was... he and Andrew were the ones that wanted to request that the Housing Trust didn't have to go to a financial town meeting. So I think it's a good idea, and I'm glad that the Ag Trust is finally stepping up and saving land for what's really needed in this town, which is affordable housing.
It should be made clear, Counselor, that the Housing Trust had nothing to do with that transaction.
Right.
It was only after the fact that it was above two of us. And given the opportunity, we applied quickly, and I would credit my fellow trust member, Susan Boddington. She acted very quickly, applied for grant funding, and did in fact receive it. I would agree, there's a few rungs on the ladder that need to be climbed yet.
Right. So I would really like to see a subdivision, a little bit more planning about what the process is going to be, and some kind of commitment of what's going to happen there, whether it's going to be a one-family house or 10-family apartment unit or what.
I will tell you that the grant application specified for single-family homes.
Okay.
Two of them, two-bedroom; two of them, three-bedroom, each with a very modest footprint, I think 1,200 to 1,700 square feet or thereabouts.
Okay.
Patrick, is there a timeframe in which we have to spend the grant?
So I don't think that there is a specific timeframe within which it must be spent, but I will say that the grant application had a fairly aggressive timeline in terms of pre-development and development.
Well, it sounds like it's a good deal. Just trust and others involved just get a little bit ahead of themselves before the... hence you're withdrawing it to get it more solidified.
I would take any blame for my withdrawal, given when the agenda was posted, we weren't sure of the specific address. As mentioned, our agenda item identified it as Old Harbor Road. And so in fairness, it was brought to my attention. And, you know, it's extremely important that anything that's done in this regard is done with the utmost transparency, certainly informing this council first and foremost, and letting the townspeople know, and certainly letting the townspeople be involved in what transpires.
This is going to get Westport's planning board involved as well, correct? Because you've got to enter through Westport before you get into Little Compton.
So there is an existing right-of-way there, which will be expanded. Any power to these dwellings would be through the town of Westport. It's sort of uncharted territory in a lot of respects.
I just did one last year, and it was 700 feet, and the first 300 feet was in Westport, and then it switched over. And I had to have two separate inspections, two separate... yeah. So it's just a little more complicated than dealing with one town.
Yeah. I will say the Housing Trust is optimistic.
It sounds like a good deal.
Yes. I hadn't intended to say anything. Follow your heart, my man. But I will point out that the interesting aspect of this, to my knowledge, is a first. In my understanding, it was explained at one of the meetings I attended, I think the Housing Trust meeting that day, that the Agricultural Conservancy Trust, and I understand that as a member here, they can correct me, purchased this property as a tenant in common with a private individual so that that enabled, my understanding of that, that enables them to subdivide this without those two parties, the private individual and the trust, having to do anything but convey the single piece into two separate pieces, one of which can be used for affordable housing. So this is, in my observation, a sort of reinterpretation of the Agricultural Conservancy Trust's legal authority to participate in an affordable housing project in a way that for almost close to 40 years, they said they couldn't do. I appreciate their willingness to be proactive in terms of following the substance in a transaction that will result in most of the parcel being conserved, but a portion of it being able to be used for affordable housing. So that's a first, as far as in my observation, and it's a step in the right direction.
You know, I agree. I think I commend the Ag Trust in thinking out the box, stick out of the box here, working with the Housing Trust. You know, Little Compton doesn't have an open space issue, you know, we have a housing issue. And, you know, the agricultural trust can't solve that issue, but they can be helpful to try to solve it. And so I commend them, Mike Spears and Nettie Levine and Bill Richmond, for being the first, like you say, in 40 years to come up with something like that. And I know they're working on putting farmers on farms and getting farming families there. So I think it's hopeful. I know there's a lot to go through here, and it's new, and I think it's a great thing.
Mike had some reflection on my comment.
Did I interject for a moment? Because I want to make it clear that the Housing Trust has not worked with the Ag Trust, nor have they worked with the Housing Trust.
Well, hopefully they will.
I do look forward to further opportunities where affordable housing can be created in town, but it should be made clear that at no point in time did the Agriculture Conservancy Trust come to the Housing Trust.
I get it. I was thinking more that it's hopeful that you guys can work together. Thank you.
Mr. Spears.
So I'll try to comment in behalf of the Ag Trust. So the Ag Trust has been pursuing a piece of property that runs from John Dyer Road to Old Harbor. It's been a 31 acres that connects a trailhead from Westport to Little Compton and Simmons Mill. So it was a critical puzzle piece to what we were trying to do for the recreational trail. The property was owned by Beverly Ann Arummo, and she wanted to sell the property. She wanted more money for the property than we could afford. We knew that, have been working with, on the whole subject of affordable housing, and how can the trust help? Normally, we buy development rights from the farmer, and the landowner keeps the property. In this situation, we were making a fee purchase that we couldn't afford. So in conversations, a developer, Dennis Talbot, from Little Compton, raised his hand and said, well, if I make up the difference, can you move forward on that property in that sale? So in essence, what happened was Dennis Talbot bought 4.9 acres of the eastern end that borders Old Harbor Road and bought it in common. With closing, he has a deed that delineates the meets and bounds of that 4.9 acres. And the Ag Trust bought the remaining 26 acres from Beverly Ann Arummo. And so the sale was consummated. As part of the understanding that we had with Dennis was the purpose for this was to be able to build affordable housing. In particular, Dennis's design was to be able to build four single-family homes on the 4.9 acres. So to that degree, we partnered, but the actual transactions were separate and distinct in the closing of the property. So this upcoming planning board meeting, we are formalizing the beats and bounds survey-wise of those two separate lots so that they can be recorded, so that then Dennis has his 4.9-acre lot with which to apply and develop through what we believe will be the comprehensive permit process in order to build four affordable houses on that property. So that's how it came down, and that's how it is.
If I may, sir? Not to be a fly in the ointment, but you've got 4.9 acres, and you're putting four houses. That'd be eight acres you'd need to...
Not to get out of the ointment, but the Ag Trust owns 26 acres. We have nothing to do with the 4.9 acres. The title to the 4.9 acres is Dennis Talbot. Put four houses on four acres is going to be outside our current zoning, and I believe it's going to be part of the new comprehensive permit process that we're going to be learning about in order to accomplish these things on that property. Everybody wants to... we have all of the same goal about getting the four houses, making them affordable. I'm just trying to...
Yeah, I just want to... I'd rather state the obvious than tell me you were considering it than not say it and find the thing blows up in our face later on when we're trying to accomplish it.
Well, what I'm trying to say is that the Ag Trust wanted to support this whole activity, and I'm sure there's a way of viewing this in that we enabled it to happen. But in fact, it was two transactions. And now the Ag Trust has a 20-foot right-of-way that goes from Old Harbor Road in a westerly direction over to John Dyer Road so that we can complete the trail attachment to the Simmons Mill project. So our objective of recreation and film it there is accomplished, and we feel very good about the fact that Dennis was able to buy 4.9 acres very reasonably to put four houses. But Dennis is in working with the Ag Trust, and if Dennis sells the property to the Housing Trust, then the Housing Trust is going to be the applicant with a comprehensive permit in order to achieve this. The Ag Trust will not be involved at all.
Okay. Thank you. To summarize what I think we've heard, let's not lose sight of the fact that this is a step in the direction of achieving a couple of things which are very important to this community, and the degree to which they weren't done by dotting i's and crossing t's precisely has been brought forward, it's been dealt with, it's been dealt with in a manner that's reasonable. I would ask that, are there two members of the council who'd be willing to work with the Chair of the Housing Trust to move forward with their plan and bring this to fruition? Because it seems in the community's best interest to move in that direction.
I'll volunteer.
Counselors Golemski and Moore are willing to participate in that fashion. Would there be a motion to appoint them to do that in conjunction with the Chair of the House?
So moved.
I'll make that... I'll second that. Can I just quickly, briefly ask the Solicitor, can you briefly tell us what a comprehensive permit process is? In a minute?
Yes. Comprehensive permit application is an application filed under section 45-53.4. Basically, what happens is, is the entire project is heard by the planning board. All the permits that are necessary to be issued are issued by the planning board. A comprehensive permit application allows an applicant to ask for waivers, waivers from zoning requirements, waivers from planning requirements in regard to the subdivision requirements, the length of streets, the width, and things of that nature, if it's for an affordable housing project. That's a comprehensive permit application. Town has 120 days to do the master plan, approval for it if it's a major land development, and then it goes in that fashion. After January, appeals go directly to Superior Court. It's a streamlined process. You're eliminating the State Housing Appeals Board. That's the one-minute...
Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Are you ready to vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Do we have to make a motion to allow the withdrawal of that?
No.
No? Okay.
The next item of business is a request filed by Phil Casey for the town to consider designating 12 of 24 parking spaces at Town Landing for residents only. The list of residents who support this proposal was attached. Mr. Casey.
I'd just like to say my letter to the council and petition speak for itself, and pretty clear. I might have a question just based on what the responses are.
Understood. Just wanted to be sure you had an opportunity to just speak. I'll ask the Solicitor perhaps to comment first in this area, since one of the things that we need to do is understand our relationship with DEM and the improvements that have been made at Town Landing.
Well, this is a legal issue. The deed for this property says that it's for the community, which has been defined officially by ordinance as the town of Little Compton. That's the first issue. In 2020, DEM funds were secured by way of a grant for some significant improvements down there. The question is, is whether or not the DEM grant and the requirements of the DEM grant to keep the property open, not just for residents of Little Compton, but all people, is an issue. I've been in touch with the DEM Legal Counsel on the matter to let them know that there is an issue here with the underlying ownership of the property. The DEM Legal Counsel has asked that the matter, if the council agrees, to defer the matter so that some discussions and further research can be done on the matter to kind of sort the whole thing out.
Thank you. One of the ramifications of such a decision, from my perspective, would be to designate certain spaces as for Little Compton residents only. Determining who is a Little Compton resident is handled at the transfer station by a sticker. We don't have that same methodology, nor does everyone who's a resident of Little Compton have a transfer station sticker. So deciding who is a, quote, "Little Compton resident parking in space A" would be an issue. The second concern I have is the degree of enforcement. Since the Beach Commission does not exercise purview over Town Landing and does not have guards and security personnel there, that would require an additional tasking to them. Third would be the idea that in order to enforce such a thing, we would need to have police presence on, as you were encouraged each of us to do, to come down there during the most recent particularly high surf situations and see the 38 cars that were parked without designation as to what town they came from down there. So this is not a matter that I think we consider tonight and say, sure, let's go ahead in one direction or another, is my sense. Yes, sir?
Hey, you got to fix it. It's ruined. You can't get in or out. There's no parking. I think you guys got to think about making more parking spots in general. Get rid of the circle. You know, what's a circle doing? Does nothing. Let me just put some wildflowers in the circle. Everybody gets in there, and you can't get in, you can't get out. And it was fine the way it was before. Maybe people worried, oh, you're going to get too close to the cliff. Oh, we just put, you know, we just put some logs like you had before, and there was no check standard. There was no need for any of that. It's not an improvement. It's ruined it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just want to speak in support of the designation of certain spots for residents of Little Compton. I'm going to read it if you don't mind, because it's a little long. Is that okay?
Yes.
Appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk in front of the Town Council. Thank you. My name's David Osborne, San Diego. Thanks for allowing me to speak in support of the residents of Little Compton and the local effort to designate specific parking areas on the Hester Simmons lot, otherwise known as Town Landing, for the exclusive use of Little Compton town residents. It's timely that this issue is being discussed before this body at this time. When Hurricane Lee came to visit us a week or so ago, my wife and I went down to Town Landing to watch the surf. When we arrived at Grange Avenue on Thursday morning, the cars were backed up all the way to Little Pond Cove Road, waiting to get access to the parking area. And when we finally made it down to the parking area, some 20 minutes later, the entire lot was filled with cars. Some parked to skew in the corners, everyone trying to find a spot to plug their vehicle. During the entire effort to get down there, I was thinking about this collective effort to, by concern, Little Compton citizens to designate parking areas for town residents. So my wife and I started reviewing the license plates and quickly determined that the great majority of cars parked down there were from Massachusetts, some from New York and one from Maryland. Of the some 40 or more cars that were there, only six had Rhode Island plates. If you don't already know, Town Landing is one of the best surfing spots in the Northeast and attracts people from all over New England and beyond. Knowing and experiencing this problem every time the surface up by a Mr. parking issue hasn't already been addressed by the town, it's my understanding from reading Article 4 of Hester Simmons' will that she desired to have... to have this area of land used for the benefit, quote, "for the benefit and pleasure of people within the community in perpetuity," unquote. In doing so, she made the town of Little Compton the steward of this incredibly special piece of land. In Rhode Island, community means a society or body of people living in the same place or neighborhood, sharing common interests arising from social, business, religious, governmental, scholastic, or recreational associations. Rhode Island Code 1228-4. Community does not mean the public in general, nor the people of New England. Hence, the wisdom of the town of Little Compton created the Town Ordinance 9-3.3, which states that the Hester Williams lot shall be for the use of the town residents only. I know from personal experience, the Town Landing has been visited and used by the broader public for decades, despite the existence of Local Ordinance 9-3.3, an explicit wording of Mrs. Simmons' will. As stewards of the land, it's incumbent upon the town to respect both the bequest and the ordinance. Petition before this body is an expression from this community that it would like the town to respect that bequest and enforce its own laws. I understand that Town Landing fell into disrepair, so the town took it upon itself to apply for a grant from the Rhode Island DEM for a grant to repair the property, and even quoted Article 4 of Hester Simmons' will in its application. In applying for the grant, I don't believe that the town intended to somehow dishonor Hester Simmons' intentions or to inadvertently expand the scriptures of the Town Ordinance 9-3.3. I think it merely wanted to repair the area and fix the drainage problems. I'd say that effort was warranted and a good thing, actually a great act of stewardship. I also think that designating a parking area specifically for town residents, community residents, would also be a great act of stewardship. I've heard from some people that by taking the money from the state via the grant, the town somehow relinquished its ability to designate a parking area for town residents. That is a silly conclusion. Rhode Island DEM has no interest in serving the people of Massachusetts, New York, or Maryland, or any other state. It protects the interests of the residents of the state of Rhode Island. The DEM by no means meant to take Rhode Island taxpayer funds and serve the interests of the people of Massachusetts, New York, and Maryland. The DEM's grant rules require public access, which doesn't mean anyone from anywhere. The term "public" means that the grant funds cannot be used for private purposes, for one person or one private exclusive interest. The residents of the town of Little Compton constitute the public. Likewise, I assume the town of Little Compton has no interest in serving the interest of anyone but the residents of Little Compton. So in my view, all interests are aligned. I read this petition and said to myself, what is the big deal here? This is a win-win situation for everyone. The petitioners are asking for something very simple, something they should have done long ago, instead of designated spaces. Were me, I'd ask the town to shut down the Town Landing to only town residents, and thereby respect the bequest and enforce its own ordinance. Yet these concerned residents are only asking that the town respect part of Hester Simmons' bequest and part of Town Ordinance 9-3.3 by designating a few spaces just for the townspeople. After all, Westport does it for its own residents, at Three Beaches and at Hicks Bridge Boat Ramp. Seems only right that we do it here. Where is the win-win? By designating specific spaces for Little Compton residents only, you will be listening to your constituency, enforcing partially the strictures of a bequest and your own ordinance. That's a win. You'll also be less than traffic from out-of-towners on a quiet lane with residents who do not want the world descending on them every time the surf is up. You will be creating potential new revenue for the town through enforcement of its new parking limitation, and for local businesses who will tow fending cars away. But most importantly, you will be doing what you should have done long ago as steward of this special piece of property. You will be preserving a small piece of this special place for the, quote, "benefit and pleasure of people within the community in perpetuity," unquote. And just as a last comment, I'd say that it's fairly easy to create a set of stickers like they have done down at the dump or the transfer station. Bring in your registration, you write your registration on the white space in the middle of the sticker, and you slap it on the car. That's the car you gotta use when you go down there to Town Landing. And if it's not there, not when you're parked in a resident-designated space, you get a ticket, or you get towed. I think that's a good thing. I think it's a fairly simple solution. They already do it for the town dump. They already do it in Westport. It seems like we ought to do it here. Thanks for listening to me. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Yes?
Mr. Machin, this is, I'm Paul Sissel from the 88 Rogers Lane. I don't know if you remember about 10 or 12 years ago, we worked on this matter together?
Yes.
With the residents of Grange Avenue. And we met with the police chief several times. And I believe that the conclusion was that the police chief had the ability to go down there and ticket people if they did not have a dump sticker. So whatever we're doing, so we could look up in the files what those conclusions were, that did not happen. So at the time, I think Rob Mara started his program, which I think was very well-thought-out, but ended up with the unattended consequence where we are right now, with being able to just beautify the area from where we had it as kids. So I would look at that data, take everything that's happening here seriously, because I think that we just keep pushing this matter down the road. And it blows up at times there. You know, sometimes you go in there, you can't get a fire truck in, you can't get an ambulance in, you know, is a very unsafe situation down there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Coward, I live at 16 Wood Lane, and asks the solicitor, what does the actual ordinance say, 9-3.3?
Well, restricts it to residents. The gentleman that just...
I think we need the actual quote, because if it's a Town Ordinance and we're not forcing it, then isn't that...
The, and if you want, I can quote it, but the gentleman that spoke earlier, he's making the arguments that I'm making to DEM. One of the issues that we need to run down is where these funds were derived from. And, you know, I know that you're gonna say, look, we have the ordinance and we have the will, and I understand that, and that's the arguments that I'm making. But the plain fact of the matter is, is that the town took money from DEM, and DEM does have those requirements. And I'm making those arguments, and here's the thing. Hold on. Whatever happened, happened. I wasn't here. But I want to say this. Rather than going, the town pushing forward on something and catching a lawsuit, I would prefer to make sure that we had all of the facts and all the evidence we need to make sure that this is handled in the best possible fashion. That's why when DEM says, look, hold on, can you wait and defer it, like, to your next month? I think that's a good idea. That's my recommendation to the council. I understand your frustration. I understand. But I just want to make sure that we have all of the facts we need on this thing.
I understand that. I just want to make one distinction. It says for the use of the town residents of Little Compton only, and it does not say for the use of the community.
I understand that. You're making my arguments.
No, I understand that, but I just need to have it said out loud that that's what it actually says and not the community.
I hope Moore say it. That's what I'm telling DEM. That's the arguments for the town. You've got the will, and you've got the ordinance, but there's a grant. So we just have to make sure that, we just have to make sure that it's handled in a proper fashion.
Can I say one thing just to follow up what I said earlier?
Yes.
I think it's important that you impress upon the DEM that the site is most often, when it's in a bad shape and crowded and there's no place for an emergency vehicle to arrive, it's from people from out of state.
One of the things, and I agree with you. One of the, I agree. One of the things that needs to be determined, and I think that's one of the reasons why DEM is asking for a deferral, is they have to isolate where the funds were derived from. Did these funds come from a federal grant to DEM? Or did these originate, as you said, with state funds? That is a key issue that needs to be resolved.
So, I don't want to go back in time, and you weren't here, but all of that should have been laid out in detail in the required meeting prior to taking, applying for it.
It was brought up personally by me, don't take money from the state, there's always gonna be strings attached. And I got basically, be quiet, stay out of it. And I said, all right, but I'm warning you, you take money from the state. And as the solicitor says, if that money is a pass-through grant from federal, that means anybody in the United States can go in there, and that's exactly what happened to the, Gary can testify to this, that's exactly what happened to the boat ramp down at Secana Point. They took federal funds via, through the state, and now anybody in the state or, everybody in the United States can use it.
Well, I think I would suggest, Mr. Golemski, that the town, before proceeding, would have had to know, should have been told by the state that the funds came from the feds and not from the state. By not disclosing that and thereby further restricting what the town can and cannot do, they failed to give us adequate...
I've got a question for the solicitor. How long do you think it would take for DEM, or you and DEM to work out what the source of the funding was and what we're able to do?
I expect it to be not your next meeting, but the meeting after. But can I say something just now? This meeting is taped, and it's a public meeting, so I'm not gonna say everything. But I'd like to speak to you at the conclusion of this. I'd like to say a few things, but not on the record, okay?
Well, in an effort... In an effort to make sure this doesn't get lost, can we, can I make a motion to put this on the agenda for a second meeting in October?
I think that's a good idea.
I'll second that.
For an update in consideration.
Correct.
Okay.
That motion has been made and seconded. Yes, sir?
I'm just wondering how, during the application process, how, if there was this ordinance in place, how did the DEM give the grant? I mean, wouldn't you have to show them the ordinance first while you're applying?
At the conclusion of this, may I be excused for a moment just to speak to these guys outside in the corridor?
Yes. I would say in answer to your question, we are typically presented with a set of conditions. And if that were in there, I don't know that it was or wasn't, but if that were in there, which is not uncommon, it would state explicitly, the use of these funds will require the following, and it will say words to that effect. To the extent that those who review the document for its detail and pull that out and say, wait a minute, this might be a problem, is probably, at least possibly, the way that one gets into trouble in this area. I don't know that that necessarily happened, but that's how it's typically done. It's not done by saying, by having a sit-down that says, now, you understand that when you take these funds, every dollar you receive from us via the federal, or from the federal government via us, is tainted with the requirement that you allow anybody and everybody in the United States of America to come to wherever this is and to use this facility. That's not an explicit statement, but I believe that that would be pointed out as being, that's what we meant when we said what we said. I realize it isn't very satisfying, but that's how it goes. And in our enthusiasm to say, here's a grant that we can get the donuts that were carved in Town Landing over the last several years, removed and properly dealt with, at the same time we said, let's put in a parking area. And in putting in that parking area, were we to have miscalculated the fact that, but what happens if someone who's not from town uses the parking area? I'm not sure that we necessarily would have noticed that that was a requirement. So that's a very long answer to the fact that I'm not certain what happened in this particular case. But I think that suggestion that we go back, find out what the requirements are, and then seek to satisfy them, is the right way to go.
It's fluid.
Yeah, I know. If I could just quickly, I don't know if it's awful to go back in time and figure out, you know, what happened. I wasn't on the council then, so I can't help you. But we're here now, and we gotta figure it out now. And I think you're right, you're talking with DEM right now to figure it out, and I think we're gonna get some resident parking there eventually. So I don't know what you can do about the square that's in there, you know, the circle, the square, whatever that is. I don't know, you know, solicitor, I don't know if we can get rid of it, but I have no idea. But we're gonna find out what the requirements were when we received the grant, what we can do with that. I know it's the donuts, there was drainage, I don't know what's under there. It does seem odd to me when I went down there and looked at it a couple of years ago, but I don't surf. But it seems the parking is an issue, obviously. So we're here now, and hopefully we can figure it out.
The motion before us then?
I'd like Tony to talk to the fire chief and the police chief, because if there's a problem with an ambulance getting down there, you need to tell DEM there's too many out-of-state cars going down there. And if it's for the local people, that might have some bearing on what they have to say.
Are you speaking of the administrator or the solicitor?
The solicitor. I was looking at the solicitor.
I'll speak then.
A couple of weeks ago, there was a lot of cars down there, and some were parked in the fire lane, and a friend of mine saw, they got tickets, $20. I mean, that's like a...
We just addressed that. So I've been pushing to increase parking fees in town, so we're on the verge of increasing them to $50 for a regular parking ticket and $100 if you're in a handicap zone. So there's, you know, asking to put signs down there, I don't think we're really restricting... If you put 12 signs, half the parking spots, and it just says for town residents only, I don't know what, we're not saying everybody can't come in there, we're just saying these parking areas are for town residents. So I don't know what we could, trouble we could get in, but there's a motion that'll allow the solicitor go forward and find out what DEM has to say. So just make sure...
Jeff McCarthy, 20th and 21st. Is there any delineation in these or in the DEM grants between access and parking? We're not talking about restricting anybody's access. They ride a bike down there, they're walking to the landing. We're talking about providing parking, you know? So is there a difference there that would allow us to...
That's one of the issues that is under review.
All right. The motion's before us to return to the second meeting in October with an update on this question. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks for the energy of the conversation, and I think we should...
Beware when you borrow money from the government.
Our next item of business is to receive letters of interest for two upcoming trustees on the Little Compton Free Public Library and consider appointment terms through October 15th, three-year terms. These are both incumbents, and they're the only two applicants?
Exactly. I've had it posted for several weeks. Their terms don't actually expire until October 15th, but our next meeting...
Motion to reappoint both incumbents. Well, I'd like to hear their names first. I know one's Nancy Osborne.
Do you have both of them in your paperwork? It's Nancy Osborne and Lucy...
Lucy Duhamel and Nancy Osborne.
I don't have it in my package.
No, it's on the other side. Turn your page over.
Okay. I'll clarify my motion for Nancy Osborne and Lucy Duhamel to be reappointed.
Second.
Second.
Second. The motion then is before us to reappoint Lucy Duhamel and Nancy Osborne to positions on the Brownell Library Board.
It's Free, Little Compton Free Public Library. That's what that is.
Excuse me, I was reading.
I know.
The Board of the Little Compton Free Public Library. Excuse me. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you both for your service to date and for your willingness to continue. The next item is a letter from Secretary of State regarding the formation of a local 250th Committee in each municipality for the state's semi-quinsentennial. I challenge you to say that. The semi-quinsentennial, that is the 250th anniversary of the founding of the country. I pointed out that we already had a 350th Committee that is in place. I pointed out that we already had a 350th Committee that is in place, and that committee is looking at our celebration a year earlier of being incorporated for 350 years. My question is, would you, would the council's desire be that before we answer this person who wishes to come and brief us on what, what she has for us, would you like us to approach the LC 350, the Little Compton 350 Committee, and see if they would be willing to take this on as an additional responsibility?
So moved. Here, here, second, yeah.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there discussion on that?
Just, just that the state of Rhode Island is playing catch-up to Little Compton, that's all.
I, I always trust that you were able to encapsulate the essence of the question in a simple statement.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Chief.
All in favor?
The motion is made and seconded that we, I will bury the Committee and we'll decide whether that's who we would offer as our point of contact. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a, is a discussion of the designation of a sealer of weights and measures, continuing to allow the state to oversee and, to oversee it, or to designate a local sealer, currently Gary Gagny, State Sealer Number Five, who covers our Little Compton needs.
I'll make motion that we continue using Gary Gagny as our weights and measures sealer.
The motion is made and seconded that we continue to use local sealer Gary Gagny, State Sealer Number Five, to cover our needs. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is to receive a petition for abandonment of a portion of Indiana Road and to designate a separate legal counsel to assist the town with this matter.
Mr. President, I do have a direct conflict in this, so I'm going to recuse from this, this matter.
Thank you.
Is there a suggestion that the Solicitor has for a legal counsel?
I did not ask the Solicitor, but the Administrator and I have discussed the, the possibility of engaging Ursula Wintites, who has commensurate kind of experience and would be an entity who could perhaps provide us with a name. Is that, is that, does that get to your question, Counselor?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I'll make a motion to allow the town administrator to contact Ursula Wintites, in prism of this situation, if they want to take on this, that we use them. Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business is a request from the Little Compton Game Club for a Class F1 One-Day Beverage License.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Communications, a request from the Prevention Coalition to hold its annual family dinner night at Veterans Field on September 28th.
I'll make this motion if the fire and police are notified or anything. Is that how you say it, Gary?
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm trying.
With all local, state ordinances adhered to.
That's what I want. Thank you.
Yada, yada, yah. If we had another 20 years, you'd be able to say-
I'm working on it.
The, the rather difficult motion, which has been made, which why I will not attempt to literally regurgitate in its entire detail, is that we approve the request and ensure that all local-
You're going to hear it again next perfectly.
I asked the originator. Seconded that.
Gary?
I did.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
A request from the Community Center for the Road to the Commons be closed for the annual fall concert on September 27th.
Motion to approve.
Hi, Gary.
With all local and state ordinances adhered to and concurrence by the police chief.
Second. The motion is made and seconded. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next is the abatement list submitted by the tax assessor.
Gary, this is usually you. Yeah, well, the tax assessor is here so she can answer to her purview.
Any comments, Madam Assessor?
Okay. And that they were just, you might have details that were not part of the-
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And a request from Young Family Farm for a single-day event license for 7th, October 7th and October 8th for apple picking and music.
Go ahead, Patrick.
Nope, I'm not ready.
Motion's approved with all state and local ordinances adhered to and concurrence by the police chief.
I'll second it though.
There you go.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Consent filed.
Motion to place on file unless someone wants to talk about it. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And the payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
There being no further matters before the council, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, very much for a most energetic discussion.